Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to the February 10th, 2022 work session of the Henrico County School Board. As a reminder, this meeting is being live streamed on the Henrico Schools site. Before we start the official meeting, I would like to take a moment, a personal privilege, to deeply thank my colleagues, the superintendent and her staff for their support over the last month, and my colleagues, particularly our Vice Chair Ms. Kinsella filling in on some of the chair duties, and the tremendous support and encouragement from our staff. I'm delighted to be here in person today, and let's get on with this meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Move to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion made by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ogborne. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda is approved.
Oh wow.
The next item on the agenda is closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under item A1 of section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees.
Motion made by Mrs. Kinsella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We will now go into closed session. We will reconvene the work session at the conclusion of our closed session. Welcome back, board members. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
I move by recorded vote that it is to the best of each school board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified in the motion authorized and the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Motion made by Ms. Ogborne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roscoe Cooper. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. The closed session has been certified. Next, we have some items from the superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Shay, members of the board. For the first item, I am recommending that the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel.
Is there a motion?
I move that the school board adopt the following resolution. I'm sorry, wrong one.
We're on administrative appointments?
Okay, I move the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Ms. Kinsella. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The administrative appointments are approved.
Thank you. The board has just approved Madi Dublin as Associate Principal at Short Pump Middle School, and Tiffany Willis, Information Technology Project Leader in Finance. For the next item, I am recommending that the school board approve a resolution requesting that the Board of Supervisors request an election to authorize the issuance of up to $340,500,000 in bonds for school purposes.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Are there any questions or comments by the board members before we ask to adopt the resolution concerning the bond? I'll start with Reverend Cooper.
No ma'am, Madam Chair, any questions?
Okay. Ms. Kinsella?
I just have a brief comment about the process and how most of the items were done, selected by study. Some of the items that have been put forward for the bond, I just wanted to say that during the retreat with the Board of Supervisors in January, that Mr. Schmidt and I discussed Johnson Elementary School renovations there, perhaps be considered as well as Holiday, but without Holiday being on the bond. So I just wanted to say that publicly here, because that was discussed there in case any of our constituents missed it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsella. Ms. Ogborne?
No, just a quick comment. I did this at the last man, would do it again, of appreciation of the Board of Supervisors and their staff of working with us so closely to meet the needs of our schools and get us up to where we should be for a lot of our renovations. And I'm especially ecstatic to see Jackson Davis on that list right at the top. It just, yeah. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. And to that point, I will acknowledge that we have Mr. Brandon Hinton with us in the audience from our government side, who's worked very closely with the school side developing this bond. So thank you for being here, Mr. Hinton. Ms. Atkins?
Not at this time.
All right. Thank you. And all I will say is I am so excited to have Quayacan Middle School on this bond.
Really?
Not that I haven't said that at every meeting, I think, for the last 12 months, but...
I'm so surprised.
There we go. All right. So with all of that said, is there a motion to adopt the resolution? And I'll point out one thing, that our motion is to adopt the sum total for the bond. And the government side will continue to work on what exactly this looks like with the financial rollout of how it fits in, all the projects in the coming months. And so, is there a motion to adopt the resolution of the funds amount?
I move that the school board adopt a resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors of Henrico County to adopt a resolution requesting an election to authorize the issuance of bonds by the county for school purposes, improvements as may be required by the actual educational needs in the county, and also, now therefore be it resolved by the school board that it hereby requests the Board of Supervisors to adopt a resolution requesting the ordering of an election on the question of authorizing the county to contract a debt and issue general obligation bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $340,500,000 to the finance school projects, and to fund the school board's capital improvement program, including capital improvements to schools, furnishing and equipping schools, acquisition of future school sites, and such other school construction, renovations, and improvements as may be required by the actual educational needs in the county pursuant to Public Finance Act of 1991, the same being titled 15.2, Chapter 26 of the Code of Virginia. Be it further resolved by the school board that a certified copy of this resolution shall be presented by the clerk of this board to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins, for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kinsella. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I am an aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution requesting that the Board of Supervisors request an election to authorize the issuance of up to $340,500,000 in bonds for school purposes is adopted.
All right. Thank you, members of the board, for approval of that resolution or adoption of that resolution. For the next item, you may know, and certainly want to make everyone aware, that February is Virginia School Boards Association's Declared School Board Appreciation Month. And so, in an effort to show our deep appreciation for our school board, I am going to ask that our school board members step forward onto the stage for a special recognition. We have some guests with us who are going to provide you some recognition, and I'm going to read a few words as you make your way down to the stage to receive those gifts. So, this year's theme from the V SBA is building the future of public education. And those who are co-architects of building that future of education along with us and for us are certainly our school board members. So, we know that school boards voluntarily tackle the enormous job they have in front of them, developing policies, making tough decisions, and I think we all know that tough decisions may sound like an understatement based on recent circumstances, on complex educational issues that impact the Henrico County Public Schools community. Their decisions and actions affect our present and our future and our communities' children. The time spent in board meetings represents just a small fraction of the many hours that our board members spend leading the school division. There is an endless string of meetings, and functions, and reports, and agendas, and proposals to read and study, and a host of difficult decisions to make. And while I know that we often want to take the opportunity to thank our board members along the way, we don't want to miss taking the opportunity this February during School Board Appreciation Month to thank them for their hard work and dedication. So would you join me in a round of applause for our board? And so, as we round out that applause, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Mac Baiton, who's going to describe the gifts you were presented with, as well as a highlight. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests, first let me say thank you. Thank you for the support of our students. It is my honor and pleasure to introduce the Precision Machining Teacher from Hermitage A. Center to talk about and introduce some of the students that were involved in designing and making this year's appreciation gift for the board. In honor of the school board's commitment to the students of Henrico County and career and technical education, I think it's only fitting that these gifts start with raw material and end up in a very useful project. At this point in time, I'll turn the mic over to our instructor, Mr. Kevin Osby.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for having us. What you have in front of us is what we did this year for our Christmas gifts to take home to the students' parents. These are two of my seniors, Mrs. Byron Badalov from Hermitage High School, and Cameron Garland from Verona High School. Looking forward to them going into the field to become machinists. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Cashwell and Henrico County School Board members. My name is Byron Badalov, and standing with me is Cameron Garland. We are enrolled in the Precision and Machining Program at A. Center at Hermitage, and it's our pleasure to celebrate CTE Month and personally thank each of you for supporting career and technical education. It's an honor to present each board member with a personalized gift that we designed and manufactured in our lab. The official name of the gift is called the Tricky Triangle, better known as the Cracker Barrel Game. On behalf of all HCPS students, happy CTE Month, and thanks again for all you do.
Another round of applause. Thanks to our students for their amazing creations in honoring our board. If you'd step forward for a photograph with our board members. And as the board members make their way to their seats, we're going to queue up a little video we want to show you. Once you've returned to your seats, we'll get it started to show a little bit about what went into these fantastic creations. Get to see our students in action here. This is awesome. So, board members and guests, if you would turn your attention to the screens at this time. So, for those who didn't get a chance to hold those gifts and see them up close, I hope the video gave an idea of the craftsmanship that went into those incredible gifts and how they were made and created. And I think it's such a beautiful thing that Career and Technical Education Month has coincided with School Board Appreciation Month. It's wonderful to highlight your work and certainly everyone's, our collective appreciation for the board. And among the many positive contributions this board has made, I don't think there's any doubt that some of the work done to continue to expand and improve career and technical education will be a legacy and hallmark of this board. Thank you again for all that you do. One more round of applause for our board members. And also, in the spirit of recognition...
Madam Chair, do you mind if I ask one quick question before our students leave? What's next for you guys? How are you going to take the skills that you've learned in CTE and build them into a career, or is... I'm just curious, what's next?
And use the mic so we can hear you. Thank you.
So, for me, I want to go into working at a place called Inner Roder, which is close to the Airport Drive.
Okay.
And I hope to go into the field of machining and learning how to run a machine shop, basically, and just work with that.
That's awesome. Best of luck with that.
So, I applied to go to the Newport News Apprentice School.
Oh, great.
Down on the shipyard and work over there. There's internal and external machining, but I still have yet to hear back from them. So if that doesn't work out, Mr. Osby's going to help me find someplace local to work, like stuff like this in the video.
Well, congratulations to you both. We truly appreciate our gifts, but we also appreciate all your hard work. I know machining is such, almost a lost art, and so important to pretty much everything we consume and do. I was a physics major just a couple years ago in college, and even 20 years ago, there were a lot of machine labs just sitting empty in college facilities because no one knew how to use them. And both Ms. Ogborne and my family have some involvement in racing, and so we know how important it is to be able to machine out just the right part for just the right fit for a specific scenario. And so, congratulations to you both for choosing this path, and something that is so, so critical to how our society functions. We appreciate our gifts and wish you the best of luck from here. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
And not only is this month School Board Appreciation Month, next week, the week of February 14th through 18th, is School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. So I'm going to ask our two clerks to step forward, Mrs. Kathy Harris and Ms. Tiffany Burton, if you would step to the front for a presentation, please. They're hesitating to go. Come on now. Round of applause. Briefly step forward. We often pop into their offices, and I know they deal with all who are sitting here in this audience, as well as the board, and we want to, we give little thanks along the way, but take this moment to really pause as we go into School Board Clerk Appreciation Week next week, and let these very special ladies know how much we appreciate their tireless work, the countless hours that go into preparing for the meetings that appear so flawlessly. So, we have some certificates for you, as well as some tokens of appreciation. So, if you would all once again join us in saying thank you to our clerks. And just pause for a quick photo, and then we'll get you back to your seats. I know their clerk duties wait for no one.
Those gifts were made by the CTE kids, too.
I believe so.
Good to point out.
Also made by our Career and Technical Education students. I believe they're letter openers, handcrafted by our talented students. I'll wait for them to take their seats, so before I move on to the next agenda item that I have for the board, and that is our COVID-19 Health and Safety Update, as is presented at each meeting. And Dr. Tigan's going to come forward to share that update, and of course, we'll take any questions the board may have for us once we conclude that presentation. Dr. Tigan?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide a COVID-19 Health and Safety Update again this afternoon. Today's agenda includes a reminder of the key COVID-19 prevention strategies, an update on our efforts to vaccinate and provide boosters to students and staff, an update on the COVID-19 testing efforts, and information about masking. This afternoon, I'm going to focus on three of these prevention strategies shown here. That will be vaccinations, again, testing, and masks. It is important, however, to note that throughout the pandemic, Henrico County Public Schools has been fully implementing each of these strategies, and worked at layering these nine prevention strategies to create the safest environment for our students to learn and our staff to work. I will start by sharing our past and current efforts around vaccination. As shared two weeks ago, one of the newest recommendations from the Virginia Department of Health is really to focus on vaccination rates within the locality. Henrico has been at the forefront of vaccination efforts since last January. Each week, the Health Committee monitors vaccination rates, and the staff work with the Virginia Department of Health to plan vaccination clinics that are accessible to staff, students, and families. As of this week, over 72% of persons five years and older in Henrico County are fully vaccinated, and nearly 40% of Henrico residents 12 and older have completed their primary series and received a booster. Efforts continue to provide school-based and community-based vaccination opportunities throughout the county. Beginning this week, the Virginia Department of Health is providing vaccinations at the remainder of our Title I elementary schools. These schools are listed on the slide, and only students enrolled at the school are permitted to participate in these vaccination clinics. Student vaccinations requires written parental consent and occurs during the school day without the parent required to be present. These clinics are being coordinated through the Virginia Department of Health with one of their partner pharmacies, who will actually administer the vaccinations. Families at these 16 schools will be receiving information directly from their principal. In addition to the elementary vaccination clinics later this month, our Virginia Department of Health partners will be providing additional Saturday clinics at Fairfield and Elko Middle Schools, so that students and their families may receive their COVID booster if they completed their primary series at least six months ago. A new vaccination initiative involves our childcare partners. The VDH and Henrico County Public Schools staff have collaborated with the Henrico Education Foundation, or HEF, Henrico POW, the Police Auxiliary League, Activities League, and, I'm sorry, Police Athletic League, and the YMCA to provide targeted vaccination opportunities for our HCPS after-school program students and their families. Each childcare provider has worked with Richmond-Henrico Health Districts, School Health Services, and the Department of Family and Community Engagement to identify sites which are listed above, and to schedule dates. These clinics will be held beginning this afternoon and extending until March 31st to complete both the first and second round doses at each site. It is also important to note that in addition to the Pfizer, they will also be offering Moderna and J&amp;J primary series doses, as well as Moderna boosters. These clinics, while focused on the students and their families, will be open to community members. These will be walk-in clinics, where the individuals complete a consent form provided on-site at the event. All persons under the age of 18 must be accompanied by an authorizing parent or guardian in order to be able to receive a vaccination at these events. Parents may provide consent on-site at the after-school program during pickup, as these clinics are conveniently scheduled during that time from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. This is just one more example of how Henrico County Public Schools students and families are benefiting from the partnership between HCPS and the Health Department. Now let's transition to testing. The Test to Stay Program allows students identified as close contacts through school and community exposures who are not fully vaccinated to continue in-person learning during their quarantine period if they test negative on COVID, for COVID each day. Test to Stay requires close contacts to take a COVID-19 test every evening or every morning for five days after exposure. If the test is negative, they are allowed to stay in school. They must also wear a mask and remain without symptoms for 10 days after exposure. So that's masking and no symptoms for 10 days after day zero. HCPS has received and distributed the test kits to all schools, and as of today, the Test to Stay Program is up and running. The other testing availabilities are take-home test kits remain available for our students. There are screening testing through the Vista Program, and take-home rapid test kits and prioritize PCR testing appointments for our staff, as well as community events within Henrico County. While we have remained committed to our layered mitigation as recommended by the CDC and VDH, we continue to consider when it may be warranted to discontinue or change practices related to any of these mitigation factors, including masking. The latest CDC and VDH guidance provides a list of factors to guide the decision-making process, and this is shown on the slide. You can see the focus on local transmission levels, vaccination coverage, testing, and monitoring and reporting of outbreaks. At each Health Committee meeting, these factors are reviewed. As community transmission continues to fall and vaccination rates continue to rise across all eligible age groups in our community, the Committee has discussed recommendations for off-ramps related to masking that adhere to current CDC guidance. As a board, you have expressly focused on what transition plans for masking might look like, and at the last school board meeting, I was directed to come back today with a transition plan that would be responsive to the CDC's factors for local decision-making. The Health Committee developed a recommended transition plan, which was shared with Division leadership, and based on input from leadership, the following slides represent the proposed transition the following slides represent the proposed transition slide plan for student masking. Here you can see the specific CDC factors to be used to guide local decision-making. Henrico County is currently in high transmission due to 492.6 new cases per 100,000 over the last seven-day period ending Saturday and reported on Monday, and 17.3% positivity on PCR tests. Over the last year, Henrico County, the Virginia Department of Education, the Richmond-Henrico Health Districts, and Henrico County Public Schools have partnered to proactively address each of these decision-making factors. Only recently, we have achieved desired targets in the areas of vaccination rates and testing availability, and we have perfected our ability to identify linked cases and collaborate with the Virginia Department of Health to identify potential outbreaks. At this point in time, student outbreaks are handled as we would for any other communicable disease on a case-by-case basis in collaboration with the Health Department. As shared previously today, the percentage of individuals five years of age and older who have completed their primary vaccination series continues to climb even after reaching 70% three weeks ago. We are currently at 72.2%, and we have embraced every opportunity to reduce quarantine and isolation times through our participation in screening testing programs. While we have seen significant drops in Henrico's transmission numbers, the community remains at the highest transmission level. Given we have achieved targets related to testing access, vaccination rates, and management and reporting of student outbreaks, we are recommending that when Henrico County falls below 100 new cases per 100,000 persons and below 10% positivity on PCR tests within the past seven days and reported on Mondays by the VDH and holds there for seven days, the board consider transitioning from universal masking for students. I stress, this pertains to students. As the Department of Labor and Industry issued a standard which applies to all Virginia public school employees, the standard requires that the school boards, as employers, must require that all unvaccinated employees and fully vaccinated employees when in designated areas of substantial or high community transmission or otherwise at risk, employees wear face coverings or surgical masks when indoors that cover both nose and mouth. There are some exceptions, which include when an employee is alone in a room or eating and drinking. And at this point, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Tigan, and beyond that, your continuous work with the Health Department, the Health Committee, our school-based health. I mean, the list goes on. You've really been the point person for all of this. So thank you for this presentation. I'm going to start with Mrs. Ogburn. Do you have any questions or comments for Dr. Tigan?
Absolutely. You know, Dr. Tigan, it's obvious. I think it's fair to say that we all want the same thing. We want this behind us. We want to move forward. We want "normal." That's a word. I think we've all forgotten what that means. But we want masking behind us. And the question that you have so fully presented is, how do we get there? And so I'm glad to see the chart. But we also have to think of how do we keep schools open without compromising the ability to deliver instruction? And if you read our comments that were sent in today from our constituents and members of the county, and you read our emails, which we have all done, you talk to constituents, which we've all done, this is such a divisive issue. And if you could go back to your first slide, there are people who don't think we do these things. And I've actually had, all the way back to the very beginning, that first one. Because these are the nine things that Virginia Department of Health, when you look at the latest guidance that came out and was updated on the 21st, this is, these are the nine things that the VDH recommends. And we've been doing them. We continue to do them. I've actually had people that I've talked to in the last week who say we don't do these things, but we do. And we've been committed to them. We've spent a great deal of time. That's okay. We'll keep going. We've spent a great deal of time and effort and our staff to each one of these things, and especially our ventilation. Other counties haven't done what we've done with ventilation, haven't been able to. We've done these things. And there are people that think we shouldn't pay attention to the numbers that you just shared with us. There are people that think we shouldn't look at hospitalization rates. And then there are other people who think the data drives everything. So, you know, the task we have is getting to the core of all of it, looking and listening to people on all sides of this issue. And so, you know, as we have done from the beginning for the last two years, we've let the data and the VDH and the CDC drive what we do. And I don't see any reason to stop doing that. I just feel like the science and the data drive what we do. So a couple of questions, based on the data. When community transmission is in the hive like we are right now, how does that affect our ability to do what we are supposed to do, which is deliver instruction? And so, for example, our absentee rates amongst our staff, is it still high like it was a couple of weeks ago? Are we seeing an improvement of our infection in our staff?
We've seen a significant improvement in our staffing level and our student attendance.
Okay.
But to your question, when we saw community, I mean, we're still in high, but when numbers were even much higher than they are now, what you were seeing were higher numbers of staff and student absences. You're familiar with the number of unfilled staff absences. So absolutely seeing the correlation between high community transmission and those impacts on staffing.
Well, and that's one of the things I think we have to look at, is can we do our jobs? Can we deliver instruction to students? And as we are mandated to do, keep schools open five days a week, full-time. And so I think about the bus drivers and the cafeteria workers and the teachers and the folks who are. But we've been able to bring those numbers down in our absentee rate, and we've been able to keep schools open with these seven things in place and their masks. And so I think that's important. I mean, it's logical and fair to say that possibly that has something to do with it. Now, obviously, years from now, we're going to know more about the science and the data and how things, what works and what doesn't. But masking possibly, it can't hurt us, obviously, but it can help us keep school open. It can help us to do what we need to do. But what about when we are in high transmission? How does that affect our quarantine time? Our number of people who are in quarantine or in isolation? As far as students and staff, do we have a lot of kids, like a lot of outbreaks right now? And do we have a lot of kids and staff in quarantine? Not necessarily ill, but do we know?
Quarantine, the number of students that are in quarantine and are learning through the quarantine absentee label has decreased significantly.
So we're headed in the right direction.
We are. We are. I mean, we have, since where we were when we came back from winter break to where we are now, you know, you see the, the community transmission is down considerably even from where it was, even though it's still in the hive. But also, we see where our student attendance is up, our teacher attendance is up, and all those things are balancing out in the right way.
So going, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, and I think that's a great question, and Dr. Tigan has answered it fully. And I'd say, related to that, when determining who a close contact has been through the contact tracing process, and as was pointed out, during the times when we were at the highest of high levels, the number of students in isolation and quarantine were far higher than they are now. That number is dropping as transmission in the community is dropping. But one of the determinants related to whether you're a close contact and would then need to quarantine is whether or not you are wearing a face covering. So while we saw high numbers of students and staff who had to quarantine, that number would likely have been far higher had students not been wearing the mask. Because again, without that, that is one of the factors that determines that close contact.
Right. Well, and not long ago, the CDC, you know, based on latest data and testing, said cloth masks are really not very effective, but recommended surgical masks or N95s or KN95s. So are we now providing to our students surgical masks? Do they have them available?
There are surgical masks available in all of our schools, and our principals hand, I mean, I've watched them as the students come in, handing them out to students.
So what the CDC is recommending is what we have available to our students. So their only option, it's not a case where their only option is to wear cloth?
No, they have an option.
So they can wear the surgical mask that we're all wearing that's recommended? And they're multi-layered, the surgical ones. So knowing that we have that in place, again, we're doing what we've been doing for two years, which is following the VDH and the CDC guidelines. And we've been listening to our Health Committee that Ms. Atkins and you, and we have so many good professionals that are a part of that, guiding us with the latest medical health information and the data. And so knowing that, I mean, I couldn't help but notice that two days ago, the Chairman of the CDC, and if y'all don't mind, I will read the quote if you haven't read it. She said, "As more states announce the end of mask mandates, and we're showing a chart that shows our way forward, to hopefully that's where we're headed," she said, "now's not the moment." The agency, this is Rochelle Walensky, told the news service Reuters, "One day after five states announced that major changes in their mask policy, she made this statement. 'I know people are interested in taking masks off. I, too, am interested.' That would be one marker that we have put much of the pandemic behind us. Right now, our CDC guidance has not changed. We continue to endorse universal masking in schools." And when the head of the CDC says something like that two days ago, and I see high transmission levels, and I see a way forward, there is a light at the end of the tunnel. I feel like we are in a good place. People have asked us to find a way forward, and we're doing it. We're doing exactly what we've been asked to do, and we find a way forward based on data and science, not politics, not personal opinion, not emotions, but we're doing it on the data and what exists in our community. Not statewide, not nation, but, you know, in our community, this is what our schools and our staff have to deal with, the fact that we've got hundreds of people ill. And so our case, our transmission level is so high right now. And I think we have to pay attention to that in order to keep people safe. But anyway, so I appreciate your information. I really do. And I'm curious to what other people have to say about this. But I'm glad to see it in a place where it's easily understood, a way forward.
And maybe I can put some context to it on data as a math person. When I think of the recommendation of less than 100 new cases per 100,000 persons, when you figure that out mathematically, that's about 15 people per day when you consider it as a seven-day total. So I'm hoping I'm doing the math right, but here on the spot. But it's, it, just to make sure that people understand sometimes big numbers, when they're aggregated together, when you disaggregate them, are smaller, obviously.
Well, and we were there not long ago. And so we can get there again, but I mean, one of the things.
We're not there now.
Right. We're not there now. And one of the things I'm so glad to see is our vaccination numbers. I mean, the CDC, the VDH both say our way forward is clear for those that can get vaccinated and choose to. That, and, and that's, for those that make that choice, that will help us all get there. But, so anyway, I appreciate it. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Shea for the next person.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Ogburn. I'm going to go to Reverend Cooper next.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. First, I want to say I concur with Ms. Ogburn that this has been a very divisive issue. And I do believe that we, as a board and as a division, have been dedicated and diligent in hearing and understanding the positions of persons on each side, as well as we have been consistent in following CDC, VDH state laws, as well as the data, which have all driven our decisions. Again, not personal opinions, no politics. First question I want to ask is, can you clarify for me what the Health Committee's recommendation is in regards to, will community transmission need to go from high to low to remove the universal masking, or what is the suggestion? Just need the clarity on that.
Right. And the recommendation is to go from being, really, it's about numbers rather than labels. And so rather than going over, having more than 100 new cases per 100,000 persons, or have, you know, and, because it's kind of both factors in, having a percent positivity of PCR testing at greater than 10 is when they're saying, the recommendation from the Health Committee to leadership was that there would be mandatory masking. And so when we fall below that 100 new cases per 100,000 persons in that seven-day period, or below, and have to be below 10% positivity, that's when it would be appropriate to make masking, you know, voluntary.
Appreciate that statement of clarity pertaining to the two drivers that would determine when we would in regards to the timeframe that needs to elapse in order for us to feel comfortable. So thank you for that. Second question is this, on slides nine and 10, you listed the factors to guide local masking decisions and omitted from the slides are the various state laws and court decisions that have been drivers of our decision-making. In much of our communication to our staff, our families, as well as our community, we have cited SB 1303, the Arlington Court decision, as well as we've been following SB 739, which we all know is a bill to amend the Code of Virginia that would speak to student instruction and allowance for mask optional for students. In anticipation of this bill passing and going into effect, either Dr. Cashwell or you, Dr. Tigan, or someone from legal, for the general public, could you speak to, and for myself and my peers, to what this means HCPS will legally be required to follow?
I'm going to attempt to answer that, and I couldn't hear all of it. But I think what you're asking is if the bill that's currently been introduced, passed the Senate, is now being heard by the House, if it were to be signed into law. Certainly, we'll be watching the effective date. Traditionally, law goes into effect July 1. It's possible, we've heard, that this could be expedited in some manner. And of course, we follow the law as we have always and would comply with such if that law were to come into effect, if that's what you're asking.
No, I appreciate that. Again, I think there's been a lot of ambiguity around what is taking place in the various localities, plus what's taking place at the state Capitol, you know, not understanding that SB 1303 is still in effect. It has not been amended. It has not been changed. There is a bill that has passed the Senate that has not yet been signed into law, SB 739. And what are the ramifications and what are the requirements for us in regards to how it affects us? So I appreciate that. Next question is, understanding that we're still in the pandemic, Dr. Tigan, and our transmission level is currently high for our students and staff who are immunocompromised or have a weakened immune system and are experiencing fear and anxiety, trepidation regarding the anticipated mask optional decision, what kind of accommodations could be provided for them in order to continue to ensure their health and safety without disruption of their learning? Will there have been options for more virtual learning be permitted in context of that decision? Or what are our plans?
The reality is, we will do what we've always done, which is work with families one-on-one individually to understand the needs of their child and then what options are available. So that would be an individual conversation with families.
Okay, so we want them to know that we are aware of what's coming down, possibly, and then we'll do the best we can to accommodate them in light of the change.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you for that. And then just quickly, last question. Mask-wearing will still be required on all school buses, all times, when boarding disembarking. will still be required on all school buses all times, when boarding, disembarking, and for the duration of travel. Despite any changes at our local estate levels, this still remains in effect until otherwise noted because of the CDC order requiring face masks on public transportation. We've already seen how some of our teachers and building leaders have been unfairly villainized for enforcing our mask policy, and one way we could provide support, as we have, to assist them in communicating that. For our school bus drivers and other pupil transportation staff, what will be the protocol for continuing to enforce mask-wearing on buses now that the option to not wear them on school property will likely be available?
Well, our buses still will continue to have masks available to students who come to the bus without them, and the expectation will be that they are wearing a mask when on the bus, you know, so that none of those expectations will change. And we have seen other localities where they have, you know, talking to colleagues, they have managed that quite well. And so we hope that would be the case with our students. But again, if there's a particular student that refuses, then that would be a conversation between the school and that parent or guardian.
No, I appreciate that, because again, this is not superseding what's already in place. That will still be in place, and we still will enforce it vigorously as we have in past.
Right, we're required by law.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tiggen. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Consella.
Yes, I think I'll start out by saying, all of us up here are parents. I think we all value choice as well. But as a school board member, as we've all said, we have different responsibilities, and we must follow laws. And the law that we've been following is SB 1303. Like it or not, how it was written, I guess that's probably why they're trying to change it now. But, you know, in the new VDH guidance from our new governor, it does say, the goal is to balance, it actually says disease prevention, I'll call that health and safety, with the goal of providing in-person educational instruction. That's SB 1303. And then when you take into account the CDC piece of that, then you come back to the prevention strategies that I believe we've showed on Slide 1 a few times today. I note our last meeting, we didn't have anything, we didn't have everything in place yet. We didn't have the, what, test-to-stay kits, I believe, and I believe attendance and staffing for in-person instruction, not just to have folks in person, but to actually have quality instruction. That's a consideration. That is our job to educate students. So that's a large component of our decision-making when we're talking about masking. And then the other number, which we have discussed in detail so far, is transmission. I have a question about the vaccination. Vaccinations aren't yet available for those under 5. I've heard from some of our preschool folks, what is the plan for our pre-K children going forward? I mean, pre-K isn't included in those who are vaccinated? If masks go away, what about our most vulnerable little people?
And I think you have to remember, if masks become optional, that doesn't necessarily mean masks go away. So families still have the option to put their child in a mask and send them to school that way, you know. And I know, on the horizon, I believe, is the vaccination for the 2 and up, or the infants and up.
Right.
Again, that'll be a personal choice of families. But should they want to be vaccinated or not, they still have the, they would still have the option in this plan to wear a mask.
Will we be adding those vaccinations to our sites as well, once they become available?
Absolutely. And it may be that they're out of sequence to the point that we work to try to find particular sites at those schools, or the health department has a van that'll go around to certain schools that we might be able to do some clinics that way, where parents could be there with the littlest kid, you know.
Okay, because we do have preschool children in our buildings, yes?
We do.
Yes, okay, thank you. Does the general government side still mask in Henrico County?
Yes, their building, I believe, is still requires masking.
They do. So they are requiring their employees to mask, and they're trying to keep their employees safe as well, right? So on the school side, that's just a point that we're trying to keep our students and our employees safe. For those people who my colleagues have already pointed out that think that this is political, I can tell you, it is not, not on our part, that this is valuing health and safety for everyone in Henrico County public schools. As someone who's followed this closely with everyone in this room, do we expect the dashboard or the definitions and the metrics to change as they have before? Because I want to feel confident in the plan. We've been talking about having one since our January 13 meeting. But do we expect any of this to change, the terminology, like for cheese to suddenly move because maybe the state, or someone redefines things? Because that happened last January. The dashboard changed completely, as did the metrics. So I just want to be really sure.
It has changed over time. Truthfully, that's why this slide is data-driven on the number of new cases and percent positivity versus relying on even levels, so that if things were to change, or, you know, this is something that I believe the data will be available in a way that even if it's not shared in the same way, that we could calculate it.
And we could still protect our community?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think that's all I have at this time. Thank you so much, Dr. Tiggen.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Consella. Ms. Atkins?
Thank you, ma'am. So many have worked very diligently to get here. Today is a good day. I feel good about being here. I got here an hour early because I was feeling so good about getting to this point. And there's two things, and actually, I have a follow-up with Mrs. Consella question. But I want to be, I want to be certain that I heard you say that every single school has surgical masks available for everyone in the building. Did I hear that correct?
We have, we have supplies available. A lot of kids, they prefer their own mask that they wear to school, but we have boxes of surgical masks. That's what we hand out when kids need a mask, or sometimes they come and request them because maybe they've broken one or gotten it dirty, and they'll come and ask for them. They are all surgical masks.
And I'll point out, oh, I just wanted to mention, the masks that we've had since day one are considered, they're disposable, one-time-use, multi-layer surgical masks. And so they are multi-layered. And then we added, in addition to that, the KN95 masks for staff. We've also ordered the youth sizes, and we'll continue to make those available and continue to stock those for those who wish to use them.
Thank you for sharing that. I'm going to give you a list of schools that I've been working in for the entire month of February. And so I'd like for us just to validate that that is accurate. So I will give you that list.
Absolutely.
Because I'm seeing with my own eyes and working in some of the schools what we have. So I want to make sure we are.
But I can assure you, we have them in stock. If for some reason they haven't been requisitioned, we can certainly follow up with the schools and make sure they have what they need.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. The other question, and actually, if you could just confirm, I want to be very clear with what this is in its current form, that mandatory masks remains the standard if all the criteria is not met in this matrix. If all the criteria is met in this matrix, in the way that it's calculated based on the formula that Dr. Tiggen outlined, it means that it has to remain that way for the past seven days and stay there for an additional seven days. So it has to, that trend has to meet the criteria based on the numbers that's defined in the formula for 14 days. Is that correct?
Well, it'll be a snapshot of what the new cases per 100,000 persons, or the percent positivity, that's a snapshot in time that's based on the previous seven days. And then what we would do is, at the next marker, the following week, we would look at then what happened over that second seven days. So if you're looking at the two weeks in totality, yes, but it's really having the marker once, and then making sure seven days later, we're still at that mark, or below it.
Thank you for that. I just want to be very clear. So once we vote, and this goes, if we all agree, or if the majority agrees, that if this goes into effect, I just want the general population watching, understanding what that means. And I agree that we don't want to get into what the formula being used, but certainly want to be very transparent in what the template means. So thank you, Dr. Tiggen. And then I do have just an overall statement. I mean what I say when I say today is a good day. It's so refreshing to get here, because a lot of hard work has gone into getting to a place where this can even be shared. And so there are certainly positive signs that this virus is moving from a pandemic to an endemic, which is what we want. I also want to thank the many that are serving, nurses, those within the health committee, but there's so many outside of the health committee, the nurses, the staff, all of our partners, our board of supervisors securing the funding and all these things that we've needed in order to get to this moment. This board, I think I'm confident in saying that this board absolutely aims to better serve students' learning and social needs while trying to keep families, students, and our employees safe in this pandemic. There are individuals experiencing mental distress and learning difficulties due to masks. Let's just be honest about that. There are. And there are also families in the need for mask for prevention strategies to make sure that they're protecting themselves, and they also want to protect others. It has been extremely troubling to be an American right now, to know that in times of crisis, division has certainly been a focus in some ways, because I was alive when we've had crisis and we unified. And we were at our very, very best. And I'm hopeful that we will get back to that. And again, history plays a role in this understanding that the country that we live in, the soil that we walk on, was born out of crisis, and coming together to fight for it, to coming together not to fight just for the soil, but for human lives as well. Mine, yours, and all of us that are here today, there are people that aren't here today that fought in times of crisis so that we could be, they pulled together. I'm hopeful that we will get there again. I'm also excited because students and employees and all our stakeholders have an opportunity to digest this in its simplified form. It is much more complex than what many may know. But it was also complicated to simplify it so it's digestible, to be able to communicate it so that a third grader could understand. Those things are important. I also want just to display that it's good to have a tool to use to help remove some of the emotion. Every parent has the right to advocate for their child. So for me, it's not a question of who's right and who's wrong, it's a question of how do we move together. Then I also just want to take an opportunity to thank Dr. Cashwell for her professionalism throughout this, for her grace throughout this as well. As leader of our operations for the school division, I'm proud of her, and I just wanted to say that publicly. And so that was my collective response based off of our presentation today. And then I do have a specific independent response for Howland Springs, Sanson, and Verina. As your elected leader, I want to continue to guide us. We've been doing a wonderful job of being an example of how to behave during a crisis, how to conduct ourselves during a crisis, and how to look out for one another during a crisis. And it's important to also know that we continue to inspire and empower and think about other individuals' well-being. I know that our priorities includes more than face coverings. I know that it should not consume our whole conversations. So I just want to be clear that I have narrowed that focus, and I have my eye on the prize in specific, unique needs for our district, for where I live. I know our human connection to each other is what's most important to us. I will continue to focus on that. And it is why we are definitely prospering amidst this pandemic. And again, in order to be very honest, I also acknowledge that most of what's happening is not because of COVID. COVID made it worse in many of these categories, but it's not the sole reason why we are having and experiencing some of the things that we have. I have received my priorities from you. I know to stay focused on bullying, on some of the negative disruptions that I am seeing. I have volunteered in many of these schools, whether I'm working in the office or monitoring a class. It's been a great eye-opener for me, and actually seeing what supplies are in the schools, and how are our children behaving, and witnessing some of the experiences, not just of the staff and the students, but the parents that come into the building. So I just want to make sure that I do the best I can to reassure you that I'm paying attention to more than what's covering a nose and what's covering a mouth, because there's so much more work that needs to be done. I have received your emails about addressing racism. I am looking into that. I want you to know that creating avenues to tell the truth about history, I got it. If you're wondering why I'm talking about all of this during a health update, it is because all of these pieces, staffing shortages, right, understanding the working conditions of our teachers. Teachers supposed to be there to provide instruction and provide a level of comfort for our children. I know that they are breaking up fights. I know that they are engaged in doing active shooter drills. I know that they have to deal with perhaps having guns in school. So the working conditions have to improve. I got it. All of these things play into the well-being and safety of every single human being in our buildings and the ones that surround it as well. So I'm going to close right now, and I want to thank my colleagues, because I know I can be windy. So thank you for giving me this time. But I do want to close in giving you some tips. You said, Alicia, lead us. So that's what I'm going to leave you with, some tips to move forward. First, pay attention to this tool. You don't have to understand the numbers, but understand how it works so that when you see us move from high to substantial, and your expectations are in a place where you understand that when you see it move down, it may not be immediate, right, because you have the seven-day total, 14 days. Also, understand that when it's high, that's where we are in mask mandates. So share your voice with me regarding the tool, call me, email me, ask questions. Also, when you're thinking about when to consider whether or not your child needs to wear a mask, because we are going to get to that place of seeing smiles and feeling hugs, prepare yourself and prepare your children. Ask yourself, what are the medical circumstances of your child and your household? Ask yourself and have a conversation with your family about tolerance of risk. And what that means is, what is your comfort level with uncertainty, and what are you willing to risk? It's a tough question, because oftentimes you have to have a loss in order to really understand, but ask yourself and have that conversation with your families. Also, talk about how onerous is masking for your child. Some children are comfortable with masking, however, it's been problematic for other children. Oftentimes, it's been problematic for adults to watch the children. So have that conversation. And one of the most important ones that I hear from students when I am in the building is, what should they do if they don't want to stand out with wearing a mask? Or what do they do if they don't want to stand out by not wearing a mask? What does bullying, what can they do about it? So parents, I am begging you to add, to have those conversations with your children. And if you are uncomfortable with the way your conversation is going, please seek a professional to help you, whether that professional is in the school with a guidance counselor or your pediatrician. And so I close with saying, yes, today is a good day. This is an opportunity to move from a divided Henrico County to a unified Henrico County. We know more. We have more resources. We are understanding what prevention looks like. We have a tool that can help us make better decisions faster, right- We have a tool that can help us make better decisions faster right now, whether we're talking about Omicron, Delta, and there's one other that slips my head right now, or whether we're talking about mutations of this in the future. Because there will be, let's pray that they're not soon. But, this is a tool that helps us make decisions better, faster, and have a conversation about the tool so that you understand in its form right now, what it means if we agree to use it as it stands. So, I'll close with that and I'll pass the floor on to you, Mrs. Shea. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. All right, just so I jot some more notes. Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins, for your thoughts and also for your time serving on the Health Committee. And as you said, we have been working towards this for a long time, but I also know the Health Committee has been working on this for a long time. And this is not just something fresh they came up with in the last three days, like, oh, hey, let's think about removing masks. This has been something you've been, as a Health Committee, working towards for a long time. And I know it is tedious work sometimes and it is long hours. I just want to appreciate for your service there as well. For some of our families, it's the same thing I said when I opened up two weeks ago. For some of our families, this is going to not be enough. For some of our families, this is going to be too much, right? And so, before we get into this specific matrix, I just had a couple other things I wanted to touch base with you on in terms of kind of health and safety and the general. Let's see. So, parent volunteers.
Yes.
Has the Health Committee, or can I just ask that in future meetings at the Health Committee, can you perhaps talk and revisit about what parent volunteers look like in our building? When that might happen, how that might happen, what that might look like? I know we have that matrix, which I think is very helpful. Like, things with numbers and matrices are very helpful. And I think it's very helpful. We developed it quite a while ago. And things have changed about what we know about the virus and transmission, also about critical needs within our building and how parents could partner there. And so, that's just an ask to be part of the discussion. I know we have quite a few parents who would be willing to help support within our schools and follow any mitigation necessary in order to do so. Second question is, just if you can provide some clarity around quarantine. So, we know the dates, we know all of that. But now that we're not doing as explicit school-based contact tracing, when would a student quarantine?
We have, there are times in the school where, because of the connection with whether it's within a classroom or if it's in a time period or area where kids are unmasked, they are still doing some, you know, limited contact tracing, as well as we do it with athletics because we know they are close contact and they are not wearing masks the majority of the time. And so, but we also get reports from parents where there's quarantining from a community exposure, which has truthfully still been the basis of most of our cases of quarantining and isolation within our schools of our students have been related, and actually of our staff are related to community exposures. So, if a parent calls and says, my child has been identified as a close contact to a positive case, then obviously, we trigger into our quarantine practices. And we're finally at the point where that child, as long as they're asymptomatic and are willing to test daily for five days from that exposure and wear a mask for 10 days from that exposure, that we can keep them in school, which is a huge, huge thing, which is that fourth column, that we are really able to minimize the impact of quarantine even more than we have. I mean, we've gone from 10 days to 14, to five, to we have an opportunity to not quarantine kids. When we do get the information, could be a sibling as well. A lot of our cases are, it's in the house. And so, there's a, you know, that's the connection.
That's really helpful. And I actually have two follow-up questions that go different directions. So, let me choose the quick answer, what I think will be the quick answer one first. You mentioned that as we've adjusted the quarantine, and I guess particularly, I should be saying, the isolation period. We've adjusted the isolation period, that it's five days, after five days, they could return, but they must be masked. And even if this matrix is passed by the board, voted on and passed by the board, it does not change that piece, correct?
Correct.
And can you give us a sentence or two as to why?
Absolutely. And just for refreshing, you know, the vocabulary, it's not what we live every day. You know, some of us live every day, but most don't. Isolation is when it's a positive case, so they've had a positive test result. Then they are required to isolate. We have reduced the isolation to five days. And as long as their symptoms are improving and they're fever-free for 24 hours and they're willing to wear masks all the time, except when like they're eating, then they may return to school. And if they have, if their symptoms aren't improving, if they're not willing to wear a mask, then they stay out for the 10 days. It reverts back to the 10 days. But parents have a choice as to what pathway is best for their child and their family.
And I think that's, what you last said is so important because we're not trying to put a scarlet letter on anybody who has, you know, tested positive. This is what aligns with what lets us reduce the isolation period. And if parents are uncomfortable with it, they have the option, they would have the option to keep their child home until they tend.
And Dr. Green, the Health Commissioner, has made it clear that even when masks are optional within a school division, they are not optional in this choice for isolation.
And this is the new Health Commissioner appointed by the new governor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was supposed to be my short question, sorry. My longer question was a little bit about the test to stay program. And so, talking about access for families who are really trying to do the most responsible thing. So, they have a sibling that tests positive. We know very likely that, excuse me, very often, that transmission occurs within the house. And so, a family that's trying to do the right thing in terms of limiting transmission. And so, but their other children are vaccinated. Could they still have access to the test to stay program to ensure that the siblings coming to school are healthy? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Absolutely. And while they can't have access to the test to stay, we can certainly work with the family to provide test kits for them.
Yeah, the test to stay program, as we're participating in and as implemented, is for specifically, a specific use case, and that would be for an unvaccinated. But remember, we also have the supply of test kits that we were providing before, should a student be identified as a close contact and so on. And so, that supply could be leveraged in conjunction with the school.
So, the test to stay has specific requirements because of how the program is defined outside of Henrico County schools. But if a parent was truly trying to do like the most responsible thing, they could contact, who should they contact? Their principal about?
They should reach out to their principal or their school nurse and just ask. And we will make sure that they have what they need. It just doesn't count as the participating in the test to stay. But that's really not the point. The point is keeping kids in school.
Right, wonderful.
And families being honest.
I saw, did I understand that the J&amp;J will be part of the vaccine?
Yes, and I do believe that I have an email from earlier today that they're going to offer the J&amp;J, not only at the childcare sites that are open to the public, but also, I believe, on the Saturdays at Fairfield and Elko Middle Schools.
Do you know why it was chosen to include that vaccine, even though we see some lower efficacy rates around it?
I think it's because of the fact that that is a one dose and that provides your primary series. And so, for some individuals, making that commitment to one dose versus two doses three weeks apart. That's why we've had such success at our Title I schools because we've taken away, we've eliminated the access, you know, issues that some of our families had.
Yeah, so important, thank you. Have we in general seen school cases, parallel community cases in terms of as we see increases and decreases? I know we've got, I know I've got the snapshot of what, I just haven't written them down, the graph in.
The, I would say that the contact tracing probably, that when we had the number of close contacts, that more mirrored the numbers than the actual positive cases. But yes, as community numbers go up, our students and staff are not isolated in our schools. So, the numbers go up with the number of positive cases that we have within our schools.
Thank you. And then we'll get to the most important slide of the day. And I have so many thoughts on it, it could be its own meeting. So, I'm going to try to be really limited about it, but I want all of our constituents to know that, you know, we have all read the hundreds of emails and studies sent and have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? And I would love to ask all of those details, but we would be here a very long time. So, I'm going to try to parse it down a little bit. When we look particularly at waiting until we get to the 100 cases or the substantial, or however you want to phrase it, how does that dovetail with the recommendations of health officials and experts around masks?
The current CDC guidance is aligned to masking within substantial transmission. So, it does align with that as far as what the current situation is. But situations have changed and that's been a change in the last probably month.
And I would add to that, and I think something particularly hearing from health experts on this and looking at both the VDH and the CDC guidance, when they talk about local decision-making factors, you know, there's more than one. And community transmission isn't the only one. It's the others you're seeing on the screen. And, you know, any combination of those vary based on the locality. And I think where you're seeing, you know, perhaps if you were only focused on transmission and all of those other things had yet to be achieved, there might be more concern. You know, even watching community transmission go down, if there weren't, you know, high vaccination rates and there weren't the availability of testing. So, I really believe that those do go hand in hand as they're presented in the CDC's recommendation of those factors for decision-making.
Thank you.
At the local level.
And as, in general, as our local practitioners and our local experts have been working with you all on the Health Committee in general, I'm not going to ask for every single person around the table, but in general, do they believe it's prudent to wait until we have, we get to this under 100 number?
Yeah, they would be very uncomfortable going back in high transmission.
And these are, these are local to Henrico that understand what our local communities look like.
Yes, and your opinions obviously vary among the Health Committee, even though some can be, you know, are all, you know, if you look at even the health officials. But it was really looking at, you know, where we are in regards to our other factors. You know, the vaccination rate is extremely important because we know that the likelihood of having a breakthrough case is much, much less than having a case from someone who's partially or unvaccinated. I mean, the numbers are staggering as to what that impact is.
I believe, last time I looked for the state of Virginia, it's about 20%. Or, excuse me, sorry, I should say, that unvaxxed individuals are being infected at almost five times the rate of vaccinated individuals.
Partially vaccinated are about five times. Unvaccinated are about 36 or higher times. So, you know, it's a combination of, again, it's a combination of factors. It's that not one thing taken in isolation. You know, the fact that we have just, just as of today, really fully provided that screening testing. I mean, having that in place was, is important to what the impact is of the totality of the factors you're seeing there.
That reminds me back to when we were talking to Dr. Avula almost two years ago or, anyway. And he said, we kept trying to understand, because this is the beginning of the pandemic, we kept trying to understand, well, just tell us what, like, just tell us what number we need to be looking at. And he kept saying, it's a contextualized decision. Like, it's a contextualized answer. And I think this points to it. But for, you know, you to say that our local experts truly feel like all of these pieces are important, is important for me to hear.
And it's important that we have made the progress on them and that this, you know, the progress on the fourth metric, the fourth factor there be met.
You know, masks have been an important part of our layered mitigation. But, you know, we have learned a lot about this virus and transmission in the last two years. Also, the virus has continued to change in the last two years with different variants. And so, you know, I think all of my colleagues were exactly right on, I think what is important, we all know that we want to move forward. And I think what is so important about this slide is it gives us quantitative ways on moving forward, right? And what that looks like, and it takes away some of the anxiety, I believe, that Ms. Atkins was just talking about for families that feel one way or the other about when might this happen? I don't know, I don't know. Here it is, right? Here's, here's, here's how to know, here's how to prepare, here's how to not feel like it's dropping from the sky. And, but I would be remiss if I didn't point out that masks come with their challenges, particularly for some of our students. And in a whole myriad of ways, I'll just focus briefly on instruction as I've had the privilege to do some co-teaching this fall with some extraordinary teachers. But specifically, some of the places that I saw masks being a challenge were with our unconfident learners. Those of us who have been in a classroom and, you know, will ask a question of a student and they answer timidly. So, we kind of, you know, have them repeat and then the rest of the class can hear and to be part of the conversation with masks, often those unconfident learners. It requires the teacher walking over right to their desk to be able to hear them and then repeat what they said to be part of the conversation. And while that, okay, is a temporary measure, it's not affirming to the unconfident learner in the classroom, you know? And so, also for our beginning readers and, you know, learning phenom awareness and sounds and that sort of thing, it's so hard with a mask. And for our multilingual students who really depend on being able to see facial cues. And so, it's important that we move forward. It's important that we do it prudently and safely. And I appreciate the work of the Health Committee to figure out what that path looks like for Henrico, for our locality. So, from a procedural standpoint, this is a recommendation from you, correct, Dr. Cashwell?
Certainly, at our last health and safety update, the board did ask that staff take a look at what, I think off-ramp was the term used, transition plans the term here. And so, while it's certainly something we've actively been discussing all along and we've been focused on those local decision-making factors, this is what we've brought forth for your consideration based on the board's request at the last meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. And seeing as we...
Madam Chair, before we move, if we're going to move towards voting, I just had two more questions. So, I don't want to stop you midstream.
I was just going to ask kind of where everybody is on, but if you have some other specific questions for Dr. Tygen, I'll defer to you.
Thank you so much. I certainly didn't want to stop you midstream because you were on the flow and you're doing a good job.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, and so, a couple, couple things that I just want to get clarification on is if you could just define student outbreaks and community outbreaks?
Well, student outbreaks are actually students that are enrolled and attending our school in person. Community out, well, and I should say that it's attributed to a school, I think, which is what you're really asking, a school outbreak versus a community outbreak. And a school is when there are, we're looking at cases and that there are links between at least three cases over a 14-day period that is epidemiologically connected, they're connected that way. And in a community is when we might have one or two positive cases in our school, but the, you know, the other one is outside the school, like maybe it came from outside. And so, if the, when the Health Department reaches, researches these multiple cases and look for connections, it may be decided that really, this these multiple cases and look for connections, it may be decided that really this one community case and these two inside, or even three inside, maybe at different grade levels, different classes, that really the connection is maybe through church, that they all attend the same church, and that's where the connection is, not in school, because they're not connected in school for that exposure. And so if it's tied to the community, then it's considered a community outbreak. If it's believed that it's happened in a school because of the proximity of the students and proximity of the cases in time, then it's, it's attributed as a school outbreak.
Thank you for sharing that. I just want the public to understand because community outbreak is not listed as a weighted factor in decision-making for our tool. It is student outbreak that is used. And then that's so important. Also, can you also, actually, let me back up on that, because community outbreak is tied to transmission, but I won't get into that. But just be very aware that student outbreak is what we're targeting on. And while it's unique to each individual case, it's important to understand the weight of these things. The other piece is if you could share the process that our partners use in determining outbreaks?
They, they do, they look, and this is where, you know, I can speak to the school side more so than the community. But within the school, if those in our school, because we are still tracking positive cases, if we see that we think there could possibly be a connection between cases, like in the same classroom, on the same bus, you know, and then research says they're seated in proximity on a bus or whatever, then our health, our Student Health Services reaches out to the epidemiologist at the Health Department, and they look, they say, here are the cases, we're not sure, and they investigate them. And so then that is, it's truly determined by the Health Department as to which cases are epidemiologically connected within that 14-day time period, that is, that they would consider it an outbreak based on where the exposures happened.
So I'll share for me, my biggest concern around understanding the timeframe and how long it takes to define outbreaks, student and community, because based off of our matrix, there is a, I'm going to say 14-day, but so that folks understand, I'll say seven, because that's what was listed on the slide. And if the amount of processing time is outside of that, I want to better understand, and Dr. Cashwell, you can weigh in, we had a conversation about this, because I am, I am super excited about where we are. But that's my biggest concern, understanding the weight around outbreaks because it's changed so much. So, understanding that it also has the potential to change. So right now, there's three variants, I think it's Beta, Omicron, and Delta. And so because all of those three things are in the mix, not so much Beta here in Henrico, but the tool, I'm hopeful that we design something, not because of where we are today, but thinking ahead, so that if we're in the position, again, that this tool will be adequate and accurate enough to allow us to make better decisions faster. So with that said, my expectation here, and here's a big question, if you're comfortable, both of us are on the Health Committee, but where I am not is on the Division Leadership Team conversations to get to this place, to get to this design. Do you feel confident in the community transmission, not community, in the student outbreak and community outbreak process, that it provides enough time to meet the seven-day trend that we put in here? Do you feel confident that with staffing and everything and thinking future, that that seven days, it will be able to do that? Because what I don't want, we've come so far, is if we all agree and vote on this with that seven days, to turn back around in two weeks, realizing that the processing time does not allow for seven days, that we have to go back and say something different. That's my only area of concern.
I think I can speak to that some, and I know Dr. Tygen will fill in where I miss details. But I think one of the positives related to the confidence for that green check under the outbreak column is that it's a very case-specific, school-specific, classroom-specific, easy-to-mobilize process. So for example, you know, whether the community transmission is high, like it is today, or were to be at its very lowest point, and there was to be an outbreak in a classroom, there were three linked cases, we would work with our Health Department like any other communicable disease, and we may, it may be that they go virtual for a period of time. That's something we can enact quickly. We're doing that now. There are times when a particular classroom may have to shift not to an in-person format because of that outbreak. It's something that's very specific to where the outbreak is, and would continue to happen no matter what we would see in transmission level. And because that process is in place and localized and specific to the outbreaks, that's what gives both the leadership team the confidence, based on the recommendation that came forward, that, you know, that we are nimble in that that process for outbreaks won't change. And even still applies outside of the Omicron. We've seen rotavirus and the flu do this a couple times, and, you know, it's hard to look backwards that far, but, you know, it had been the case. So feel confident in that process of managing and mitigating outbreaks at the local level.
Thank you for that, Dr. Cashwell, because while we'll have a decision-making tool to help us, I also want to be clear that there are some things specific, maybe to one school or several schools, where this may not apply. And I just want to be confident in putting that on the record, that if we are in a situation where something comes or we remain high and we have a school with a larger outbreak, and perhaps it's outside of that window that we've set here, that local principals and administrators have the opportunity to make a decision that may be different from what's here. Is that accurate?
Yes. And I think when, you know, this is generally applying to the idea of when, and what the Board has asked of us, is to talk about when would we move away from a universal masking. So exceptions to that are, for example, Dr. Tygen mentioned isolation. If you are a positive case, if we're following the isolation guidelines from Virginia Department of Health, if the student would return after five days in a sympathy, they would be required to wear a face covering during that next five days. So absolutely, those pieces of mitigation, the handling the outbreaks, dealing with specifics around isolation, still remain and are part of the mitigation strategy in its totality.
Yeah. And I would just like to clarify, like with outbreaks, that's a decision that's made with our School Health Services in collaboration with the Virginia Department of Health. Those are not decisions made by school administrators. It, you know, must have that medical epidemiologist view.
Thank you for that, because there are communities that don't have readily available services or hospitals. And so it's important to understand that there may be exceptions to this rule. There may be communities that, particularly mine, where the internet is not working always properly. And so I see, I don't see the internet as a luxury, I see it as a necessity to get communicated with and to communicate out towards and understand. So I just want to be very clear and very aggressive that for some communities, this may not work. And so if that is the case, that Henrico County Public Schools will be sure to do everything that we can to accommodate what we have in this tool in its current state, and make sure that, of course, what we all want, again, as I say, to see smiles and feel hugs. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. So our last mass matrix, I believe we voted on in August. And because we took a board vote on that, I believe we need to take a vote on this matrix, if this is how we want to move forward. So I am, what I want to ask of each of my Board members, I am not asking at this moment for you to take a vote on this. What I'm asking is if each of you is ready to take action on this matrix, and if it is the will of the Board, then we will move forward and vote. So I'm going to ask each of you if you are ready to take action and adopt this matrix and move forward with this. And then if you are not, what do you need to be ready to do so at the February 24th meeting? So that is my question to you, Mrs. Ogbonn.
Mrs. Shea.
Oh, yeah.
If I may ask a question, would you all be voting on basically coming back, using this matrix as a tool, and once you have all of the information, that would trigger you all to come back and make a decision about masking later? Does that make sense?
No.
What are you...
If it's the will of the Board, I'm asking if it's the will of the Board to adopt this matrix, then if it is the will of the Board to adopt this matrix today and give Dr. Cashwell the authority that when we meet these, these, all these green check marks to, to, you know, enact optional masking?
Okay.
Does that make sense? So I was teaching, taking a straw poll, are we ready to act on this? Do we want to, do we need to wait another two weeks? And in those two weeks, what would you need?
I understand now. Thank you so much for that clarification.
Thank you, Council. Mrs. Ogbonn?
That was going to be my caveat.
Can I, can I, so Megan, excuse me, are you saying that what the action, not the, the action that, that the Board Chair is asking us to take, is that permissible?
Certainly. So you all can take action today and say, we want to approve this matrix as our tool and guide for our superintendent, and we ask that she use this in determining whether, you know, when to stop universal masking in schools. You also, I think the superintendent, the reason I asked the question was because I thought Dr. Tygen said the recommendation was that the Board consider transitioning based on this matrix. And so I just wanted to know and be clear on which direction you all were going, whether you were asking your superintendent, or just what exactly you all were considering taking action on. Does that answer your question, Reverend Cooper?
It does. I just wanted to be clear so that we can make sure that we are in alignment with what our capabilities are in that context. Thank you so much.
Ready? Just checking. Now, that was actually going to be my, my caveat, so to speak. I am ready to vote on this, but I would like to give Dr. Tygen the authority, because, excuse me, Dr. Cashwell, I'm sorry, because as Dr. Tygen said, you know, this seven-day period can fall in between our meetings. And having to wait, that's one of the issues I've talked a lot about with constituents over the last few days, is that we only meet every two weeks. In April, we have one meeting. There could be a period of time where we are not meeting, and I don't want us to have to call a special meeting, notice that, get this done. I'd like to give the, the authority to the superintendent to act on our behalf, as we do on many things. And so, yes, I am ready to vote on this.
If I may, Mrs. Shea. So the only caveat I would say is that my understanding is Dr. Cashwell would be, have the authority to make a decision based on this matrix, considering all of the factors. So as Mrs. Atkins had talked about earlier, she might say, I'm going to end universal masking with the caveat that this school still needs it, or that there might be other additional factors that she's taking into consideration, but that this matrix is the trigger for her to then make a decision based on all of the data. Is that what you all, just to clarify?
Well, I mean, in other words, Ms. Watkins, what you're saying is if there were exception, for example, let's say there's an outbreak at a certain school, Dr. Cashwell would be authorized to say for, you know, that, that it would be all the schools are going to go masked, optional, except for possibly, based on the data, this particular school, if there's an outbreak?
Correct. Or in the alternative, if there, if she, if all of this data were true, there were four check marks, and it was a Friday, whether she would say, well, we will start this on Monday, we'll start it next Friday, we'll take two weeks?
Well, that's...
Is this a trigger that automatically, or is this something where you're saying, I want her to have the ability to consider and make a decision about what's best based for the school division?
I think the intention is, and, you know, this could be, if needed, a conversation of on the Board members, I think we need to take this each step, like, are we ready to vote? What's the vote? Does Dr. Cashwell have the authority to enact it? I think those are our steps.
So I think first, if I might, as I'm hearing it, Chair Shea, you're trying to garner whether each Board member individually is comfortable with the, with this at first. That's your first question?
Yeah, like, do you have the information?
Or is there something missing?
Do you have the information you need to vote on this today?
Or is there something not here that you would, that further you'd need from administration?
Well, and Mrs. Shea, if you, if you don't mind me adding, this is what our constituents have asked for. They have asked for data, they have asked for a metric. What metric are you going to use to make a decision? This is what we're giving them. And we're saying this is the metric that the VDH and the CDC, the guidance that we have makes us comfortable to make this decision. And if it's in between board meetings, Dr. Cashwell is going to go ahead and make that decision without having to wait for us to meet, then, you know, but this is what folks are asking for. They're asking for numbers, they're asking for hard data. How do you make the decision? So this is what it is.
So the first question that we're dealing with is, do you have enough information to make a decision on this slide today?
Me, yes.
Okay. Ms. Ogbonn says yes. Roscoe Cooper, do you have enough information today to make a decision on this slide?
So for me, I'm, I'm just kind of trying to process it all. From the perspective of, I get the defined metrics that we're going to look forward to, you know. But, you know, with the CDC guideline currently, you know, because nothing is mentioned on the slides about CDC in regards to, like Ms. Ogbonn mentioned earlier, what she did stated regards to universal masking, still recommended. What, what, what impact would their, their position have on our decision to make a change? Would we make that decision if they decide to still stay CDC recommends masking, and we, but these metrics are met, would we say, well, we're not going to follow CDC, but we have met these metrics, so we're going to remove universal masking? That's the question I raise.
Is that a question for Dr. Tygen, or just a...
No, to the other two.
Okay, that's your, okay. So are you saying that you are not...
So what I'm saying is, so nowhere on, on our metrics is anything mentioned about CDC. Nothing is mentioned in regards to VDH in regards to that. This is, this is local, based on us. So we got it on our nine, but I'm saying it's not on the, you know, on the nine. What does the CDC's recommendation, how does that impact our decision to off-ramp? That's my question.
And I do think it is aligned with what the current CDC, I realize what a statement from someone versus what is on the website as the guidance, there's, there is a disconnect there.
Doesn't the guidance right now still say that universal masking is recommended by the CDC?
Yeah, it says in schools during high transmission. And so this is not indicative of high transmission.
Right.
And so in that way, it's responsive. And what the CDC does list, if you'll go back, sorry, I know you're advancing, and right there, this statement at the top, related to monitoring those factors to guide the decisions at the level, at the local level. And so that's what was reflected there, is reflective of the CDC, and, and certainly does not put us in a position where we would not be masking during a period of high transmission inside of our schools.
So, so what you're saying is that we are in compliance currently with what the CDC recommendation is, and we will continue to comply?
Correct. What's brought forward here allows us, in our view, to continue to be compliant with that, because the CDC recommendations talk about layered mitigation, the local level, and using these decision-making factors to determine local plans for mitigation. And, and, you know, broadly, as Mrs. Ogbonn pointed out, the CDC has stated their general position related to masking in schools remains as what has been stated since, I believe it was the July-August timeframe, related to when we saw them make that change, to make this recommendation during cases of high transmission.
All right. Can you come back to me? Let me...
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Cancelo, do you have the information you need to make a decision today?
I believe I do. I mean, we, we asked for a plan. We asked if the Committee was talking about a plan. The plan is, is now here. We even talked about it at the last meeting, though a lot of folks missed it. I'm very excited about it. It's transition, it's not a pivot, which I think is, and it follows what's safest and best for Henrico County. and best for Henrico County, Henrico County schools specifically, our students and our employees. So I have what I need. Thank you for this plan, and thank you for the, as Ms. Ogbonn said, the metrics, the actual numbers. And I appreciate your question too, Reverend Cooper, because I wanted to be sure, well, I asked already, if the, you know, the dashboard and the definitions and things have changed along the way, and I've often had to reconcile the rhetoric. So if we feel comfortable with this, and Dr. Cashwell said she did, then yes, I have enough information to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Cancela and Ms. Atkins.
If I could just add, communication is key. Like, this is not happening today, but this is the plan, right? Like, just want to say that, communicating this to, to our community.
We are currently not at the level of transmission.
Correct.
Correct.
But this is the transition plan.
Correct.
It's not a pivot. It's a transition.
Not only does this not reflect where we are today, that certainly, it's a proposal we've made to the board based on your request to see what specifically would be the point in time or the moment where we would recommend off-ramping from the universal masking. Of course, we mentioned a lot of exceptions related to specific cases, like returning from isolation. And then, so we would certainly await direction from the board related to how you would want us to proceed, and based on the board's decision, would, would communicate with our stakeholders effectively. And at this moment, it's a discussion, and it is just that. And so, you know, should it be something we move forward with more formally than we'd communicate it?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Atkins, do you have the information you need to make a decision today?
I'm going to ask one more question, and I think I'll, I'll be able to answer your question. So if you, if I may, I just want to be clear one more time that there will be exceptions to the rule. And when those exceptions happen, what does that process look like?
Well, I think the only specific exceptions I can think of are related to specific cases we've mentioned already. And so first of all, when we, if we would move away from universal masking because all of these conditions were met, individuals may still choose to wear a mask. We may have some who choose not to. This would not apply to adults in our buildings, our staff. We mentioned that the Dolly regulations, it would not apply to buses, assuming the federal order were still in place, and it is. So we have to, I don't know how far in the future it would be that this, these conditions might be met, but assuming that were still in place, that would be an exception. If a student were to be a positive case of COVID and isolate and return, and so they would need to, to return wearing the face covering. Again, that's current health commissioner guidance and in alignment with the recommendations for VDH. And so those cases would, would still be applicable. They are today, and they would be even if we were to move in this direction.
Thank you. And then the other question, Chairwoman Shea, is I just want to be very clear that are we going to vote on this after we share these remarks?
So if it's the will of the board, and at least three board members are prepared to make a decision today, then we will take a vote on it.
Today?
Yes.
Okay.
And if any information is needed, you know, we're happy to, both Dr. Tighgan and myself, staff, provide any additional information responsive to any additional questions or needs the board has related to this topic.
And so I do feel that communities deserve the opportunity to digest this. I also want to speak for several employees to have the opportunity to digest this with the understanding that I am on the Health Committee, and this has been a long time coming. And I am, like I said before, excited to be here. But it is not lost on me that it's taken this long to get here. So in a mile of 30 minutes or an hour to switch and vote without getting the public's input, whether you're a person that want masks gone yesterday, or a person that never want masks to go away, I don't think there are very many, but there are many that certainly are immunocompromised and have their opinions on wanting to wear their mask. And then there are our students. There are many students that are holding on to this mask, like Linus hold on to their blanket, because of some of the mental things that they've developed over time. So to vote on this and not give our students a voice, to vote on this and not give our Henrico County Public School employees the opportunity to even talk about what their options are and if they're uncomfortable, to not give the individuals that I spoke with that said, you know, what Ms. Atkins' mask should be gone yesterday, but not to give them the opportunity to look at the specific science behind what we're doing, I am uncomfortable with. However, what I will say is, this is a wonderful decision-making tool, and that as long as it's agreed upon that in certain districts, I'm speaking for mine, if we are in a situation where we feel that we want an exception to this rule, that that would be considered. So that is my response.
I'm sorry, I missed the very last, which was the most, part of the most important. Can you repeat your very last sentence?
No. Dr. Cashwell and Dr. Tighgan have both spoke to it, but I, I just want to say it one more time for the record, that as I, I believe in this, I shared my concern around that one section and the weight of it, and they both confirmed that they are, they will consider exceptions to this rule, and I'm just speaking on behalf of Powell Springs, Sanson and Verona, where some of this just may not be a good fit. And I'm saying that because folks haven't had an opportunity to weigh in. They're seeing this for the first time, just like many of, I am. So having to process all of this in a matter of an hour and then vote on it, knowing that it took two years to even get here, I, I don't feel happy about. But I do know that progress comes sometimes with some sacrifice. So that is my statement on the record, just making sure that it would be considered that in my district, we may not fit this model all the time. So thank you so much.
So specifically, do you have the information you need to make a decision today?
No.
Thank you. Ross, Reverend Cooper?
So I want to make sure that right now, we are not changing our current policy pertaining to universal masking. Is that correct, Dr. Cashwell?
Certainly only the board could make that decision, as you implemented that in August, and your policy still holds related to your universal masking until the board decides otherwise.
And so for me, thank you for that statement, because I don't want there to be any misunderstanding that we are voting today saying that we are removing universal masking. We are not removing universal masking. What we are saying is, we have developed the criteria, we have developed the metric that we will use to determine if we are removing universal masking aligned with what possibly might come down from the state. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that captures it. What we've shared with the board at the board's request is a target, if you will, a scenario might be the right word, for when we might recommend the board consider moving away from universal masking. That is responsive to CDC, takes, has to take us out of high transmission. We are not out of high transmission today. And so I, I think if, if this is forecasting, if you will, for a time when that would be possible.
Which, which again is nebulous, because we don't know, it could be months, depending upon SB 739, if that changes.
And that's correct. I mean, I think to your first question, is if, if a law is passed before any of these four checks would be achieved, does that matter? Well, we would follow the law that was passed at the time the law became effective, so yes.
Well, you know, so Madam Chair, I am comfortable accepting this formula, I mean, in regards to what we're saying, that this is not removing it right now, it is not saying our policy is changing, we are going to take in consideration what the state says in regards to SB 739, and this is just a targeted metric that we will use to have a definitive kind of direction to go in, to remove the ambiguity. So yes, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. I also think it's important for our community, wherever they fall on the spectrum of masks, to understand where we're moving and how we are getting there. And I think this provides it, again, as Reverend Cooper so beautifully pointed out, there's still a lot of unknowns that could come from the state or elsewhere that could, that could change this, but I, I think it's so important for our community to not feel like it fell from the sky. And so this gives them the understanding of where we're headed and how. And so I, I am a yes also as to, and so it's, it sounds like it's the will of the board, with the majority of the board having the information they need to make a decision today. With that being said, is there, is there, is there a motion to adopt this student masking transition target as presented?
That can certainly be your motion, Mrs. Shea, or someone can make that their motion, if that's what you're, it all is in the way that you're phrasing it, so.
Thank you. So it, thank you, thank you, legal counsel. So is there a motion to adopt this student masking transition target slide as presented?
Mrs. Shea, I'd like to make a motion that the school would approve the student masking transition target as outlined.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogbonn, for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cancela. All in favor for adopting this student masking transition target as presented? Please say aye.
Aye.
And I am an aye. All opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. This student masking transition target has been adopted. As a follow-up, board members, is there a motion to give Dr. Cashwell the authority to enact this student masking transition target when we meet these four check marks without having to call a special meeting or a separate board vote? Is there a motion?
I move that Dr. Cashwell has the operational authority to follow the student masking transition target that the board just approved.
Thank you for that motion, Mrs. Cancela. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
I am an aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Dr. Cashwell has the authority to enact the student masking transition target plan as adopted.
I think Dr. Tighgan can, you, we're, thank you for your patience. I've noticed how long she's been at the podium through all of that, so. Thank you, Dr. Tighgan. Thank you again to the staff, the members of the committee who continue to guide us as we are in current practice and thinking to the future. All right. For the next item, I am going to recommend that the school board accept the Praxis and Virginia Communication and Literacy Assessment Assistant Grant Award of $6,070 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Is there a motion?
I move that the superintendent, I'm sorry, that the school board accept the grant award of $6,070 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cancela. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The grant has been accepted.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending that the school board accept the Dual Enrollment Alignment Grant Award of $28,760.94 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Is there a motion?
I move that the school board accept the grant award of $28,760.94 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Motion made by Ms. Cancela. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ogbonn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the grant has been, program has been accepted.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending the school board approve the right-of-way agreement with Virginia Electric and Power at Tucker High School.
I move that the school board, I'm sorry, I'm just going to jump right in.
Is there a motion?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Shea, go right ahead.
Is there a motion, Ms. Ogbonn?
There is. I move that the school board approve the right-of-way agreement with Virginia Electric and Power Company.
Thank you, Ms. Ogbonn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The right-of-way agreement has been approved.
Thank you. Next, I am recommending that the school board award construction contracts to EMC Mechanical Services for the replacement of boilers at Brooklyn Middle School, and for the replacement of the cooling tower at Glenly Elementary School, and to Capital Boiler Works Incorporated for the replacement of air handling units at Hermitage High School.
Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
I was going to say, do I need to, is there a motion?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I move that the school board award construction contracts to EMC Mechanical Services in the amount of $246,370, and $281,992, and to Capital Boiler Works Incorporated in the amount of $367,500, and authorize the superintendent to execute the contracts in a form approved by the county attorney, and to execute change orders within the scope of the project budget, not to exceed 15% or of the original contract amounts.
Take a breath.
Motion eloquently made by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cancela. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The contracts have been awarded, and the superintendent's authority approved.
Thank you. And that concludes any items I have for the board this afternoon.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. The next item on the agenda is public forum. Citizens had until 4:30 PM on Wednesday, February 9th, 2022, to submit comments for the board's review, using a link on the HCPS website. Citizens took advantage of that opportunity, and we sincerely appreciate their input. Comments were compiled and provided to us prior to the start of today's meeting, and those comments have also been posted to the public in Board Docs. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Board members, do you have any unfinished business? Hearing none? The next item on the agenda is new business. Board members, do you have any new business? Hearing none, we will take a brief recess until 5:30 for the public hearing of the recommended FY 2022-2023 annual financial plan. We are hereby recessed briefly. We are now reconvening our February 10th, 2022 work session. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing to solicit input on the recommended financial year 2022-2023 annual financial plan. Mr. John Wack, Chief Financial Officer, will share some information before we proceed.
Good evening. Tonight, we'll be walking through just a few slides that summarize the superintendent's fiscal year 2023 recommended budget. This public hearing follows a public input session that was held on December 9th, and multiple opportunities for the public to provide written comment. So we will not be taking any action tonight, as the school board is set to approve the recommended budget on February 24th. So in summary, the fiscal year 2023 recommended budget reflects the following notable changes from the current year. Our general fund budget is increasing by about $23 million, or just over 4% compared to the current year, based on the target amount we received from the county manager. Our debt service budget associated with previously approved capital projects is increasing 10%. Our self-supporting school nutrition fund is increasing by about 5%, primarily due to benefits changes and pay adjustments. And our state and federal special revenue funds are increasing by about 8%, and that's primarily due to $4.5 million in recurring personnel costs, supported by our SOR II and III grants. So overall, the operating budget from all funds is growing nearly 5%. And wanted to note that our fiscal year 2023 figures do not yet include any funding for pay raises that will be added later in the process. These pie charts simply illustrate the major spending categories of our general fund budget, and we can see that instruction remains the lion's share of our expenditures budget at 76%. And we can see that instruction remains the lion's share of our expenditures budget at 76%. And finally, our revenue charts illustrate our major categories in the general fund. And we can see that the target increase of just over $23 million makes up the difference in fiscal year 2023. And that, again, will come from a combination of county and state funds. So that was my brief summary. And we have had our 185-page budget document posted online for some time. And of course, there's a lot of details for others to review.
Thank you, Mr. Wack. Some citizens may have signed up in advance with the school board clerk. We will follow that list first and then allow anyone else who wishes to speak on the financial plan to do so after we have completed the list. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and neighborhood or school affiliation. Any use of profanity or inappropriate language will be ruled out of order. Once you've finished speaking, if you did not sign up in advance, we ask that you write your name and contact information on the sign-in form located at the table at the back of the auditorium. Due to health concerns, hand sanitizer is provided. Speakers, you are allowed allotted three minutes to address the school board. To assist you in your tracking of your time, there is a timekeeping system displayed, displaying the elapsed time on the screen. Speakers will also receive a notice from the chairperson when your time has expired. The school board is here to hear from you, the community. Speakers should speak directly to the board. We will not be responding to speakers, but we will carefully consider your comments regarding the annual financial plan. We appreciate your attendance here this evening and for providing your input. At this time, we have no speakers who have signed up for, to speak in advance. So anyone else who is here to speak on the financial plan, now is your opportunity. Seeing none, the public hearing regarding the budget has come to a close. The last item on our agenda is the announcement of meeting dates. The school board's next meeting, oh, yes. Excuse me.
It looks like there may have been some citizens that just arrived. I'm not sure if you could see them, though, from your angle.
Oh, thank you. We will give a few minutes for some visitors that just arrived to see if they're here to speak on the financial plan. Ms. Hargrave, since you're close to the, oh, oh, here comes our. Hi, good evening. Are you here to speak on the financial plan? Okay. All right. In that case, we will move to. Okay, great. We will move to the last part of our meeting, which is the announcement of meeting dates. We will, it will be a work session scheduled for Thursday, the 24th, 2022, at 1:00 PM and a monthly meeting at 6:30 PM. Times may be adjusted if needed. This meeting is adjourned.